I think it's off. I need to decide that I'm asking. And then just be all right. Okay. I put the whole time in your up here. Okay. Okay. My job being talking and going back. Okay. No problem. You're good. That's all right.
I said you get the book. Come on, then. Come on back. Yeah. You see. I am small.
Shut up.
I'd like to call the meeting of August 5th, 2024 to order.
2021?
I'm sorry, 2021. Do we have any special intentions? Councilman Carroll.
Thank you.
Councilman Carroll?
There you go. Testing, testing. Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to ask for your prayers for a friend of mine, Mr. Ronnie Taylor, from the South County area, especially from the Pollock area, affectionately referred to as the back-of-the-track area, who have lived there for many, many years. His family, friends, all through the area. He went on to glory about a week ago, and so I ask for your prayers for him and his family. I also ask for our prayers for different countries around the world: Afghanistan, Cuba, Haiti, Russia, India, and the United States, of any atrocities that are happening, because what happens to one of us happens to all of us. And I pray that you keep the United States and all of those countries, all of the world, in our prayers, particularly with the effects of the COVID that we are dealing with and any other effects, atrocities that are happening around the world. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Anybody else?
Mayor Benzon.
Mayor Benzon?
Thank you, Council Chairman. Sam Dunn, code enforcement since last 14 years. Unfortunately, passed away yesterday. He came on in March 12th of 2007. He had served the Code Enforcement Department well. Great guy, if you ever had a chance to meet him. And he will be missed by us, obviously his colleagues, his people he works with, and also his friends and family. So please keep him in your thoughts and prayers. Thank you, Council Chairman.
Thank you, Mayor Benzon. Anybody else?
Yes.
Yes. Councilwoman?
Yes, thank you, Council President. I just want to, last week or last meeting I spoke with-
Mic. Mic's not on. There we go.
Hello, can you hear me? Yes. Thank you, Council President. Last meeting, I spoke with Mr. Joe, about Mr. Joe Rain and asked for prayers. Unfortunately, on July 26th, he passed away. I was told that he was wearing, he always wore his City Council Ambassador badge and Kenner City pin every day. He wore it proudly, and I'm just asking for your prayers, and may he rest in peace. We'll always remember his civic-mindedness and excitement to attend council meetings. So, thank you. Prayers.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Anybody else have any special intentions? Seeing none, we'll move to the prayer. Today, we have Reverend Mark Mitchell from New Hope Community Church. We really appreciate you coming today and blessing us, if you will, to the microphone. Yes, sir. Thank you very much.
Good evening first to the Honorable Mayor Benzon and to the entire council members. Thank you for the work that you do for our lovely city. What I would like to ask, if we all could, for a moment of silence and due respect of men and women who are in uniform, fighting abroad and at home for our freedom and our liberty, even for us to be able to express our thoughts in time that we share together. Also, keep in mind in meditation of those who are first responders. Moment of silence, please, and then I will come in and ask blessing upon our meeting this evening. Thank you. Our Father, which art in heaven, hallowed be thy name, thy kingdom come, thy will be done in earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us of our debts as we forgive our debtors. Lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from sin and evil; for thou is the kingdom, and the power, and the glory forever. Father, we come this evening with grateful hearts on one hand, but also we carry pain in our hearts on the other hand. Knowing that what's happening in our world, in our country, the death, loss of life, joblessness, we come before you thanking you for our family members, thank you for our jobs, thank you for a place that we can call home here in the city of Kenner. Father, I want to thank you for the important role of government that it plays, not only here in our city, but cities throughout this land and country and states and also the United States of America. Without the important role that government plays, it would leave our society in total chaos. As I stand here, I want to thank you for this mayor and all of these faithful council members who pray for this city, work on behalf of this city to make quality of life, whether north or south of Kenner, better than before. And we want to thank you for their commitment, thank you for their sacrifices. Father, we need you in such a desperate, wicked time in our world. We ask for your mercy where mercy is needed, we ask for your grace where grace is needed, we ask for your forgiveness where forgiveness is needed. Strengthen these council members tonight and all department heads, along with our mayor, that they would truly work on what are called unity and on oneness, Father. Regardless of party, regardless of race, creed, and color, but to put the citizens of Kenner first, serve them in high honor and respectability and dignity is truly our prayer. And then, Father, there were those on the council tonight who mentioned particular names of people whom they know, asking for prayers for their family. One, Mr. Ronnie Taylor, his name was called in this council chambers. We ask your special blessing on behalf of his family. Also, the atrocities that's occurring throughout our land and country, other countries that are suffering, and when one suffers, then all of us do suffer alike. Also, for Mr. Sam Dunn, his name was called, may your special blessing be upon his family. As well as Mr. Joe, who voiced prayers for him and all of those who we voiced prayers for tonight, whether we have made mention of them by our words of our mouth or even in our minds and our hearts, we ask for your blessing, your strength, and your guidance to be in the life of these family members who've lost a loved one. Bless this meeting now, as we put it in your hands. Lead us with wisdom, knowledge, and understanding that when this meeting is over and has ended, we will all leave knowing that we've done our jobs for that which we have been elected to do. This we ask, in Jesus' name, for His sakes I pray these prayers and other prayers that's on our hearts and our minds, that time would not allow to be mentioned. But, Father, you know in your infinite wisdom what's on our hearts, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Reverend, for the wonderful prayers and blessings. Next, we have the pledge, and we're going to be led in pledge by Councilman Hayes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have just a few brief comments. First, I want to mention that we're back in our council chambers after some time, and it's truly nice to be here. So I would like to thank the mayor and the administration for putting this together for us. It's not quite back to normal, but at least we're able to function again. So thank you all. Also, just a reminder, of course, the public may not know, but we actually have electronic voting tonight, which we haven't had in quite some time either. So again, that's a nicety of being back in the chambers. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. You have a quorum. In accordance with Council Resolution Number B-14550, please be advised that all cellular telephones and other devices of this nature must be deactivated or silenced throughout the council meeting. Do we have any resolutions, motions, or other items from the floor? Seeing none, under the consent agenda, we have item one, approval of minutes, the regular council meeting of July 16th, 2021. Item two is approval of alcoholic beverage permit applications. We have none. Item three is approval of bingo and public gathering applications. We have none. Item four is correspondence, reports from the mayor, CAO, or department heads. Item 4A, at the request of the administration, a report from Mayor Benzon.
Mayor Benzon, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Council President. We do have a code sweep to report on. On July 28th, the code department swept the 2,600 blocks to the 2,700 blocks of Tupelo in District 1 with the help of Councilman Carroll's office. Our inspectors reported following violations. One vehicle parked across the sidewalk, sorry, two vehicles parked on the grass, one facing inside, three high grass and weeds. Total violations were seven, warning violations. Shows that there are some good things going on in the code enforcement department. We have some new leadership there that is addressing that. So I want to thank everyone who's involved with code enforcement and how we're doing the code enforcement department now. We've seen a little bit of a change, and obviously they are out there more often than, because of the sweeps, are starting to generate some lower numbers, so I hope it stays like that. We are going to have two presentations, Councilman. I probably should tell you that earlier today. One will be a very short presentation from Doug Dote to bring us up to date on COVID. Obviously, the variant has become an issue as we're all back in here, and I appreciate the thanks that you've given to us on that, even though we have to excuse the ceiling tiles, but we're working on that. But the variant has become an issue, as we know, as we have a mask mandate again by the governor, and I copied that and did that also on Wednesday. So the mask mandate is back in here, and I appreciate everybody cooperating with that, wearing the mask for your safety, but the safety of others too, throughout the city of Kenner and on city property. So Doug's going to give us a quick presentation on that. And then we have TSW, who is back, Tom Walsh, Sarah McCauley. They're back again from Atlanta to give us an update. You all, I think all of you were at the presentation we did back in June, sometime in June, that with the public hearing, to let people hear at the town hall meeting, hear what's going on to Esplanade Mall, our plans for that, our tentative plans, and also for Rivertown, which I got to say has attracted some interest from some people. So TSW architects and planners, it's economic development revitalization plan, and also, like I said, for Rivertown and also Esplanade Mall. So I appreciate Candace Watkins, which she has done with economic development, along with her board, getting us to this point, but also the hard work of TSW. So if you don't mind, we're going to go with Doug Dote and then go straight into TSW. I've done the two presentations. That's all I have, but obviously if you have questions, we can answer that to the administration. Thank you for your time. It's going to take just a little bit with TSW.
Sure.
But Doug Dote?
Thank you.
Mr. Dote?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council members. Just to give you an update on the latest information on COVID, there were 5,468 new cases of COVID reported in Louisiana today, with 33 additional deaths reported. Yesterday, Jefferson Parish had 451 new cases, and that's an average of about 458 cases each day over a seven-day period for the last week. In Kenner, the cumulative number of cases since last year is 8,551. State health officials are closely tracking the positive test results for COVID at the local level, particularly in light of the recent uptick in cases due to the Delta variant. When the LDH sees an increase in positivity rates within a particular area, they notify local officials. Health officials will then target those areas with increased numbers of testing and vaccination sites in the hopes of quickly addressing the spread of the disease. We've seen that here in Jefferson Parish and Kenner, with additional testing and vaccination resources being deployed at different locations on a weekly basis. When individuals test for COVID, they provide their residential address, and this is submitted to the state. Our city is divided into 18 census tracts based on population data supplied by the U.S. Census Bureau. Those tracts don't necessarily coincide with the subdivisions or the council districts, but the testing data from those individual tracts is compared with the previous week and tracked over a month, and from this, the rate of increase for a particular track is established by the state. The number of tests and rate of positivity is analyzed by the state and reported to the parish on a weekly basis. Recommendations by the CDC and LDH and actions taken by the state over the past 10 days are indicative of the level of concern they have about the rapid spread of the Delta variant within our region and local area. Based on LDH data, looking at the 16 of the 18 local tracts, this is where we can get most of the information readily, there's a couple of tracts that don't always report on a regular basis. Based on that, we know that there were 132 positive test results in Kenner for all of June. In July, there were 874 positive cases reported in Kenner. In July, the highest positivity rate in any one track was 32%, and the lowest was 5.6%. In one instance, one track reported 107 more cases over the previous month, and 100 of those cases occurred in just the last two weeks of July, 52 in one week and 48 in the other. Comparing those two weeks, July 15th through 21st and July 22nd through 28th citywide, there were 138 additional cases in that second week alone in Kenner. Our biggest concern at present is the impact to our hospitals. According to LDH, across the state, 2,350 people are hospitalized, with 250 people currently on ventilators. In Region 1, and that's Orleans, Jefferson, St. Bernard, and Plaquemines Parish, there were 485 people hospitalized with COVID and 40 on ventilators. In this region, there are approximately 2,988 hospital beds, 655 are currently available. As of today, LDH reports that there are a total of 456 ICU beds in the region, and only 73 are currently available. Yesterday, Governor Edwards introduced a masking mandate for the public interior spaces in order to reduce the spread of the disease. This mandate will remain in place until or through September 1st. Hopefully, these mitigation measures result in quick reduction in the number of cases throughout the community, and we look forward to resuming our activities without restrictions. Kenner's emergency management staff continues to closely monitor COVID conditions and update officials on a regular basis. Today, our EOC staff participated in the weekly White House Task Force meeting, and we also joined our first responders and administration in participating in a webinar with Ashna Hospital to discuss the latest on COVID developments. All Kenner municipal departments continue fully operational. We have implemented reasonable measures at our facilities in order to protect our residents and employees. We will pivot and adjust municipal operations as necessary while continuing to offer uninterrupted essential services to the residents of Kenner. I'm glad to answer any questions.
See you.
Councilman Carroll?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. President, Mr. Dote, thank you for that information. Obviously, it is something that is on the minds and on the souls of everybody in Jefferson Parish, Kenner alike, and the numbers on Kenner are obviously not as good as it was a couple of months ago. But do your numbers reflect, because I've had conversations with healthcare workers, particularly Ashna, about coming in and to being able to offer the vaccine or testing, but they would like to know, or they didn't know, I don't know either, as far as it relates to the city of Kenner, are the numbers more reflective of, I'm just going to throw this out here, south of Araline, south of Veterans, southwest Esplanade? Is there a way to know that? Because if we're going to use the resources, we want to use it in an area that is, you know?
Right. So as I said earlier, we spoke to Ashna today and had, oh, we had a webinar this afternoon, later, earlier this afternoon, with Ashna, and they are briefed on a daily basis about the local impact of COVID by census tracts and that sort of information. They then plan with the parish and make the determination as to where to set up their mobile sites and to adjust with the parish in order to make adjustments to the homebound vaccination program. So they get this information directly from the state, and they are, they're the ones who coordinate with the state and the parish to make those determinations as to which areas. So when you see these local mobile sites popping up in different locations, it's an indication that that particular area is probably seeing a little bit increase in positivity rate. And these positivity rates are reviewed on a weekly basis, so they're looking at data in real time to get that information and then make their determination based on that.
Thank you. And I, so based on that information, I will now reach back out, excuse me, to Ashna, because if it's done on a parish basis, and it goes from Grand Isle all the way to Jefferson Parish, and they're going to look at it from a cumulative position of the priorities for the parish. Obviously, we are, we have done a good job with our employees, with the city, and I'm looking at it territorially, and I am going to see what is the secondary so we can address in the city of Kenner. So I'll reach out to them, because they're open to helping like that, not just on a parish level where the parish president looks at it. I want them to look at it specifically for the city of Kenner. So I'll look at that and see if we can determine from their data what area in Kenner will be better served directly with that. So thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay. Next. Who do we have now?
TSW will be up next.
If you will name an address.
Good afternoon. Is this up? Is our slideshow up? Oh, there it is. Thank you.
Can you provide your names, please?
Yes. I'm Thomas Walsh with TSW.
I'm Sarah McCauley with TSW.
Thank you.
Go ahead and start. We want to thank you very much for allowing us to come and make the presentation this afternoon. I really specifically want to thank the mayor and the selection committee that selected us a number of months ago. We have thoroughly enjoyed this project, and what's so exciting about this project is that there is such possibilities that you will see in a few minutes that you can have within the city of Kenner that makes it exciting. Candace Watkins also played a very important role in helping us move this project along, because as you all know, we're trying times with the COVID. So we had to do this virtually, as well as we fortunately had an in-house session that we had over 100 people. So that was very exciting, because they helped us, just in that one session, make some significant changes to the plan that, again, we'll revisit that this evening. We also had David Lowby with Noel Consulting and Randy Gibbs, Community Development, and Linda Nugent-Smith, who really provide that local flavor to this thing. So it really came together and condensed into this very nice project. Let me see if I can go through this. So we want to go through an agenda with you. We're going to try to do this as quickly as we can. I put on your seatbelts, because we're going to go fast. We have a final, we want to talk about the open house, Esplanade Mall, the Rivertown, and the priority recommendations and next steps as we go through to this.
So the purpose of doing this entire project was to create a vision and a set of goals and tasks for economic development and design for both Rivertown and Esplanade Mall. Plans like these can encourage private investment, because the community's preferences and what the city wants and the vision are well-established, so private investors know which direction to go. And this is a 10-year vision, so things could start happening now, but it could, we put a lot of stuff in here, so it could take a while to get done. So I'll go through the vision and goals here. The vision statement for the mall is that the mall site will once again become Kenner City Center, a mixed-use, inclusive, and beautiful environment that meets the needs of Kenner and the surrounding region. For Rivertown, the vision statement was that it will be an attractive, thriving arts, entertainment, and innovation district that builds on its history in connection to the Mississippi River. So then we created goals for each of these sites that directly address that vision, and all of our design and planning work and recommendations wanted to reflect what we said in these goals that came from public input and site analysis. So we want to make sure that both locations are welcoming for all people and that people can stay where they currently live. We want to have a safe transportation network for all users, ensure that the codes and policies support what the plan says and what the vision of the city is, and then making sure that public spaces, we have great public spaces, and then promoting science and the arts and having a high-quality work environment. So we had our open house that Tom mentioned in June, and as he said, we had a lot of people there. We got really great feedback. Some of the main things we heard about Rivertown were concerns about gentrification and flooding and stormwater management. There was some support for expansion of and improvement of the green space at La Salle's Landing. And then, from the feedback that we heard, we made sure to have stronger language in there about stormwater management, and then more policy recommendations to kind of offset the effects of gentrification. Another thing we heard was unhappiness about the fact that Lloyd Price Avenue and Fourth Street have two separate names. So we renamed, we recommend renaming the entire corridor to Lloyd Price Avenue. For the mall, many of the concerns that we heard were about just the logistics of getting it done, because this site is pretty complicated with a lot of different owners and lease agreements, but there was general support for the town center. Tom had a few conversations with some residents and attendees at the church, so we revised the plan, and we moved the multifamily building that was on the southwest side more into the site, and we'll show you that site plan shortly.
So Esplanade Mall, ladies and gentlemen, is the most exciting piece of this, because it's your center of Kenner. I mean, it's north and south, and it is, you don't have a there-there at this point in your city. This could be the there-there with Rivertown being that special destination place. So what we really want to do in any good urbanism, and as we are flying into New Orleans today, I was really taken back by how great this grid system is throughout the city. It really is this great connectivity. So we want to re-weave the mall back into the existing fabric of Kenner. So we show these additional connections back into the fabric. Ultimately, it'd be safety first, getting fire ambulances across the canal and pedestrians, and then maybe someday we could have vehicular connections there. So we really wanted to connect that back there, so we created this grid system. The next thing is, you really need this nice there-there, this downtown center, and I'm going to have, Sarah is going to talk about it in more detail and in a larger scale, but at the northern end, we reconnect or connect and weave back into the existing- For the mall, many of the concerns that we heard were about just the logistics of getting it done because this site is pretty complicated with a lot of different owners and lease agreements. But there was general support for the town center. Tom had a few conversations with some residents and attendees at the church. So we revised the plan and we moved the multifamily building that was on the southwest side more into the site, and we'll show you that site plan shortly.
So Esplanade Mall, ladies and gentlemen, is the most exciting piece of this because it's your center of Kenner. I mean, it's north and south, and it is, you don't have a there, there at this point in your city. This could be the there, there with Rivertown being that special destination place. So what we really want to do in any good urbanism, and as we are flying into New Orleans today, I was really taken back by how great this grid system is throughout the city. It really is this great connectivity. So we want to re-weave the mall back into the existing fabric of Kenner. So we show these additional connections back into the fabric. Ultimately, it'd be safety first, getting fire ambulances across the canal and pedestrians. And then maybe someday we could have vehicular connections there. So we really wanted to connect that back there, so we created this grid system. The next thing is, you really need this nice there, there, this downtown center. And I'm going to have, Sarah is going to talk about it in more detail and a larger scale. But at the northern end, we reconnect or connect and weave back into the existing. ... relationship, either through a TIF or other ways, yet this has to be managed that way. So it's going to be an important part of the whole development. Lloyd Price Street, as you can see, where it connects into Fourth Street, that's a Woonaf Street, we call them, where there's no curves or grides. You can close it on for special events and so forth. And anchoring the southern portion of Mississippi, we put two mixed-use buildings that would have residential and commercial above it. I've been doing this for 43 years. This is one of those special projects that I, I'm looking to retire in three or four years. I'd come here if you will, if we can get this built. This is, but we wanted to take Jefferson Highway and reduce it to two lanes just as you terminate on the park and the river, and then expand back to the four lanes one block later. So we want to keep it more pedestrian residential and feeling when you have special events down there. This is just a quick section of how those buildings could work, additional parking, again, not only for residential and commercial, but for the commercial space. And just think of the views along the river if you had residential on these sides. So this would be something special. We don't want the castle any longer. We want to convert it back to what it originally was. This is a historic image of it. And then this is what our architects in the office came up with, a more modern, but respecting the architectural integrity of the building. And this could be probably a maker space or something. So this is just another shot of this with the Lloyd Price Street, the mixed-use building, all of these things coming together to make a much more eclectic because you have this great entertainment district. And we really want to see it stay that way as this project moves forward. This is that building I was talking about on Williams Boulevard. Again, I love the fact that what we had to do, we were forced to bring out an arcade right out to the street edge, just like you would find in the French Quarter in New Orleans. So you have that architectural flavor, but then have some residential above looking down into the street. Again, this is Louisiana, New Orleans feeling, but then have an additional parking for all the guests that would come to visit this place or the theaters and so forth.
All right. So I'll talk a little bit about the priority recommendations to make this happen. The report has many more details and many more recommendations, but these are the main ones. So citywide, we're recommending to determine a unifying brand for the city. And then you could have subareas like the Esplanade Mall and Rivertown that have their own brand that fits within the overall vision. Expanding community outreach and education so that people feel compelled to be involved in planning processes moving forward as well, to really shape their future. Enhancing city operations and building partnerships with other agencies to get things done. You can leverage their resources and their best practices to make sure things happen more quickly. And then they're also good partners for finding additional funding sources and ensuring your long-term financial health. Improving connectivity, as Tom mentioned, with Esplanade Mall, bringing in those streets to make sure those neighborhoods around it are connected, and then preserving diversity through long-term affordability and workforce development opportunities. For the mall, most of what we're recommending for short term is just getting the site ready for redevelopment. So that involves hiring someone to disentangle the ownership and the leases, recruiting a private developer to, that's like-minded and wants to, you know, work towards this vision to redevelop, and then rezoning the mall properties. But then, once you get into the actual redevelopment, we're suggesting that it's really important to have those street connections and then connecting with anchoring institutions that could maybe be the first person there to really start to catalyze the redevelopment. And then with Rivertown, we're looking at using, well, first project, redeveloping the city-owned parcels at Williams and Short Street, the building Tom was talking about with the parking deck and the residential and commercial. Removing the wall at Stewart Plaza to reconnect Lloyd Price Avenue and Fourth Street and relocate all of the memorials and everything all along the new designed shared street to make it feel so that you're recognizing the history and also making a really welcoming public space. And then with the policies, making, there's a lot of city-owned properties in Rivertown and using those as leverage and public-private partnerships. Again, rebranding and then evaluating the historic district guidelines. We conducted a quick audit of those in the report and just making sure that they are in line with what you want to see in Rivertown, and then potentially rezoning some properties to allow more residential unit types. So our next steps, we're submitting the final report in a couple of weeks. And that's the end of our presentation. If you have any questions for us.
Councilman Carroll.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good to see you guys again. And I want to say, thank you guys for the presentation that you gave in Rivertown. One of the, one of the things people sometimes get from, you know, organizations, planners, like yourself, you give and don't listen as much as the people want you to. But I must admit, you gave the citizens, the residents of that era, area, an opportunity to talk and you listened. You shared information. You agreed when you had something on paper that you say, you know what? That does make sense. So for the people themselves in the area, including myself, it was great to have that feedback back and forth. Something as little as Lloyd Price, most people don't know, I mean, I've been living down there my whole life, there's only two buildings that extend from Lloyd Price, from Minor, all the way to where it did is at Compromise. There's not one residence that addresses Lloyd Price. You got to know, when that, when that wall was put up, it was looked at as a wall to separate, not to engage and to make it a more public place, which is the plans that I see. So obviously, people are not upset about that because most people don't like walls because it tends to separate people as opposed to engaging people and bringing people in. So y'all also, one of the bigger things was the gentrification and the fact that this area where it's different from the mall, it's a lot more, it's the oldest part of the city. A lot of the people who live there have been living there, their families, for many, many years. You understood that for them, a lot of them will like to continue to live there within their neighborhoods. Now, Williams is the area that we're going to look at and along, you know, you say Jefferson Highway, but Reverend Richard Wilson, that's what we renamed it to, to be the area to redevelop into something that's open to more people. So I think with that understanding about that, it is a little different. It is a lot of people that live there, right one street over from Williams. With that understanding, everything else west of that will have a flair of some type of fifties and some type of an old city block. And I think with some of the additions for the river to give that ambiance of other structures, I think, I think we can work this out where it will be a good fit for the area. And most people will be able to understand and accept some of the, some of the changes that, you know, we always want to ask for more of this and that, but you got to change a little bit sometimes, and sometimes change is tough for some people. But I appreciate the attention to details, the attention to the people who live there, their comments and concerns, because I think it all played out well, and it was depicted in you guys' sketches. And then as we drill down more, we look forward to you guys coming back into improving it in the area and offering our little piece of history to other people.
Thank you.
So thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Carroll. And I too want to just ditto a lot of the thoughts that Councilman Carroll said during the process, and this has been a fairly long process. You had several meetings with the public. You tried to involve them. You welcomed them, no question about it. And I kind of compare it to us. When we make legislation, laws, it's important to have the people to be a part of the process to have a good outcome. So I thank you, and my hat's off to y'all for doing such a good job. So thank you very much, and we look forward to that final plan.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anybody else? We're good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk.
That will conclude the consent agenda. I have a motion by Councilmember Wilmot, seconded by Councilmember McKenney. Councilmembers, please vote. One more vote. Motion passes 7-0 for the consent agenda. Under the public appearance agenda, we have item nine, public hearings and final passage. Item 9A is a public hearing regarding summary ordinance number 12,877, an ordinance amending the 2021, 2022 operating and capital budgets to fund two part-time recreation department employees to assist at Musburger Lino Playground and amending ordinance number 7549. The chairman have received a request for a two-meeting deferral. I have a motion by Councilmember McKenney, seconded by Councilmember Branigan, for a two-meeting deferral. Is there any discussion on the deferral? Seeing, seeing none, councilmembers, please vote on the deferral. Motion passes 7-0 to defer. Item 9B is a public hearing, excuse me, sorry, regarding a resolution authorized on a public hearing to be held on August 5, 2021, during the regularly scheduled council meeting of the city of Kenner to allow the citizens of Kenner the opportunity to comment on the Kenner Police Department's application to the United States Department of Justice Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program fiscal year 2021, local solicitation of $13,042 for police officer overtime for law enforcement activities and criminal investigations. Have a motion by Councilmember Brennan, seconded by Councilmember McKenney, to open your public hearing. Councilmembers, please vote. Motion passes 7-0 to open your public hearing. We're now in a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the council on this matter? Please come up to the podium and state your name and address.
Morella, name and address.
Al Morella, 4260 East Loyola Drive, 5th District, 49 years. I support this resolution. We definitely need to step up our patrols in the city of Kenner. That's why I support it. Thank you.
Anybody else? Chief? Chief? Thank you.
Yes, this is an annual, annual grant we receive from the Department of Justice for overtime for follow-up criminal investigations and narcotics disruption. The sad part about it, every year it seems to get less and less, so. But we've still been having it for many, many years, and it's, it does help us close some crimes.
Any questions from the members? Seeing none? Please vote.
Councilmembers, please vote. Motion passes 7-0 to close your hearing. I have a motion by Councilmember Brennan, seconded by Councilmember McKenney, for approval. Any discussion? Seeing none, councilmembers, please vote. Motion passes 7-0. Item 9A is ordinances for the sale, purchase, transfer, lease, and/or alienation of immovable property. We have none. Item 10 is opening of bids. We have none. Item 11 is reclassification of zoning for final passage. We have none. Item 12 is other ordinances for final passage. We have none. Item 13 is resolutions and motions by councilmembers. Item 13A is a resolution ratifying the appointment of Dr. Abdallah Darwish to the City of Kenner City Civil Service Board in accordance with Section 8.02A 7 of the Charter of the City of Kenner. I have a motion by Councilmember Carroll, seconded by Councilmember Hayes. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, councilmembers, please vote. One more vote. Motion passes 7-0. Item 13B is a resolution appointing Dr. Colin Hullen to the Municipal Fire and Police Civil Service Board of the City of Kenner to replace Mr. John Oliver, whose current term expires on July 30, 2021. Have a motion by Councilmember Brennan, seconded by Councilmember Wilmot. Any discussion? Councilmembers, please vote. Motion passes 7-0. Item 13C is a resolution reappointing Mr. Chad Held to the Municipal Fire and Police Civil Service Board of the City of Kenner, whose current term expires on July 30, 2021, for an additional term of three years. I have a motion by Councilmember Branigan, seconded by Councilmember Carroll. Seeing no discussion, councilmembers, please vote. Motion passes 7-0. Item 13D is a resolution ratifying the appointment of Dr. Barbara Soniat to the City of Kenner Fire and Police Civil Service Board for the term which ends July 30, 2023. I have a motion by Councilmember Segur, seconded by Councilmember McKenney. Seeing no discussion, councilmembers, please vote. Motion passes 7-0. Item 13E is a resolution ratifying the appointment of Joyce S. Sala as inter- Item 13E is a resolution ratifying the appointment of Joyce S. Sala as interim city attorney for the city attorney. I have a motion by Councilmember Segur, seconded by Councilmember Brennan. Councilman Branigan?
Wait, Councilman? You have to put it on the floor or?
It's on. I called your motion. Your motion is Councilmember Segur, seconded by Councilmember Brennan.
Okay. I had a couple of things that came to mind. You know, we're voting to appoint you as interim city attorney and I wanted to make sure you understand what attorney-client privilege means because Councilmember McKenney sent an email and we did not get a response back other than you have to do, conduct thorough full thoughtful research on this topic. And I just want to make sure that we're clear that you work for the administration and you work for the council and you represent both of us. And if the administration has something going on and they request that the council not be notified, or if the council has some legislation that they're requesting and we're, and you're asked not to tell the administration, we want to make sure that we're on the same page. And it's, it's a situation where, I don't know how long you've been an attorney. I didn't go look that up, but I'm assuming that, you know, if the administration is putting you in place, that you're the right person for this. Mayor Zahn had made a comment to me in a meeting with Deborah Fauchet and Dave Sherman a couple of weeks ago that he was concerned about how the past attorneys represented their client, who was the council, and didn't represent him. And I just want to make sure we do not have any issue with that situation in the future. Are you clear on what I'm trying to get apart, the point I'm trying to get apart? Okay. And are you going to respond back to Councilmember McKenney's email?
I, I didn't, and I apologize that I did not answer that. I thought Dave, I, I'm sorry, I thought David Sherman would have answered that and I, I thought David Sherman did answer that. However, if you would like me to answer that, I can answer that if you like.
Okay, well, yeah, I would like a response to that email and make sure we're on the same page.
Yes.
That we don't have any problems in the future.
Yes.
You know, if we have a problem with the council being represented, then that even brings more validity to the council, you know, having this budget research person with an attorney background to make sure that the council is represented. So, yeah, I would like a response to that.
And I, let me just say this real quickly. I will probably have, I had, I had spoken to outside counsel on ethics.
Okay.
And that's where I got counseled from. And I represent the City of Kenner.
Okay.
Which is the legislative body and the executive branch. You're, all my clients. I cannot withhold information from one council member from another. If any council member asks me to withhold information from another council member, that is a conflict because I represent you all as a body.
Right. I understand that.
So if one person, one council member contacts me and asks me to hold, you know, confidences from the rest of the council, I cannot do that.
Okay.
As to the other part of it, I would have to get back to you on that. And, and I think, correct me if I'm wrong, that your question is whether, as a body, if the council asks me to withhold anything from the mayor, you're asking me if I can do that.
Correct.
Is that your question?
Yes.
Okay. I'm not prepared to answer that today.
That's fine. Just respond to Councilmember McKenney's email when you have the answer.
I will do that.
And, and I'm sure that we'll get a copy of it.
Yes, you, you all will. Yes, sir.
Well, I will be voting for you today.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Branigan. Next, we have Councilman Segur.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to comment that, you know, through the tenure that Ms. Salas had with the City Attorney's Office and the numerous dealings that I've had with her, that certainly I'm very impressed with her background and her diligence in doing that job. That gives me the full confidence that she's capable of being this interim city attorney. And so I would certainly cherish and welcome that taking place. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Carroll?
Thank you, Mr. President and Attorney. I look forward to working with you. Welcome aboard. Our relationships as it relates to code issues have been more related to that. So now that you're the city attorney, I look forward to that, obviously without any question of your ability or your capability or your tenure as an attorney. Let's not, let's, let's not be, you know, the elephant is in the room. You are coming in in a situation that is, that is, has had some, some situations that you are coming in on that you had nothing to do with and everybody knows what that situation was. So that alone is something that you have to, obviously have to deal with, with, from everyone. So I'm sure you're up to the, to the task and I look forward to working with you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Carroll. And, and Ms. Sala, welcome aboard. I, I have a few questions though, and it's, I guess more, it's interim appointment. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And could you, what's the understanding for the interim appointment? Is there one at this time? Is it for a period of time or is it, do we have, when are we going to revisit it if so?
I'm going to, I'm going to start that off and I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Fauchet after that. It's interim. Interim could be a week. Interim could be next year. We don't know. We have a lot of work to do, the mayor's office along with the council office. I don't have that concern with Ms. Salas of is she going to keep something from the council? Because I'm not looking, I know, but I'm not looking, not looking to have any type of government that we're not, that we're keeping secrets from each other. So let's get through the work that we have to do. We have a lot of work to do, a lot of, I think Councilman Carroll said it the best. There's an, there's an elephant in the room, obviously, and this is the best way that I see to get through the issues that we have right now. And I don't want to call it out one department, but obviously it's in this department that we're, that you're getting ready to do a ratification on. So I don't know. It could be a week. It could be a year. We'll see that. I don't think y'all are looking for a timeframe in concrete, but I mean, it's going to take some months. It's going to take some months to get through the issues that we have. I know Ms. Fauchet probably wants to add some things to that, but I'm not going to commit to anything but from now until possibly a year.
Just trying to get a concept is what's going on?
I've been trying to get a concept for the last couple of months, so I don't have that concept yet. I have the concept that I think Ms. Salas will do the best job that she can.
Is there, is there a, a search of any kind for, or is this?
So we've already put a, we had discussed about that. We had already put a SOQ out. I'm sorry, that's probably what you were asking me.
Yes.
We put a SOQ out last week when you and I met. We'd actually done it that day, whatever day that was, Wednesday or Thursday. We had put the SOQ statement of qualifications out. So yes, we're waiting for all qualified firms to come back. I mean, there'll be a lot that we'll be looking at and seeing where we're going from there.
Okay. And, and again, I've, I've worked with Ms. Sala too on several things and I, I appreciate her and I just wanted to ask.
No, it's, it's a legitimate question. I just can't, I'm trying to, I think we're all trying to wrap ourselves around what we have going on, so we're, we're trying to get through a few things that, God knows you and I have talked enough over the last week or so on, on issues that are popping up.
Right.
So just have, bear, you know, bear with us while we're getting through it, like, and y'all, y'all in the same situation. I mean, it's, it's your attorney also.
That's right. I agree. And Ms. Fauchet, you wanted to make a comment?
Yeah, I think she said some things ahead.
Yes, sir, Council President. We put out an SOQ last week for miscellaneous legal services and the return date is September 2nd. We are seeking all qualified firms and individuals which wish to work with the city, whether that is in the capacity as a city attorney or as an outside counsel. The inquiry includes a questionnaire, a legal questionnaire, and it identifies all the areas of practice that we think are, are involved in the day-to-day practice of the city attorney's office. Sometimes you'll get one-offs you don't expect, but for the most part, we believe this list will be very comprehensive. The intent is upon receipt of those responses to identify all qualified and create an all-qualified list. At that point, a decision we made about a recommendation to council regarding an individual or firm as the city attorney. And at this point, while we are in this interim stage, the process in the city attorney's office is to evaluate the inventory of work they have on hand and make decisions regarding the best use of both inside and outside resources.
Okay. Thank you for that information. I just wanted to make sure we're absolutely clear that it's interim and, and what that means. Anybody else have questions? Councilman Carroll?
Thank you, Mr. President. And Ms. Fauchet, thank you for that explanation because, you know, I just wanted to make sure at our last meeting, those were the exact, that was the exact question that I asked as a tentative plan to have a plan over so many days and then to come back and to let us know how that's going as opposed to it being open-ended. And that is, that is what you're saying. I forget the, the number of days, 30, 40, 45, whatever, but to come back at that point to, to update us in status on what's going on. Is that, is your, is your recollection of that conversation close to that at least?
Did I answer it this time the same way I did last time or am I pretty close?
Pretty close.
Okay. Yes, sir. That's the plan. At the time we last spoke, we were unclear as to when the SOQ was going out or the length of time. So now we're in a better position to know that we will have responses back on the 2nd of September. So we will have something, I would anticipate that we'll back to talk to you in October at some point.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Carroll. Councilwoman McKenney?
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to say that I think it's, you know, given, given everything that's happened within the legal department, I think it's really important to stress the importance, and I know that you guys spoke about it, the continuity of operations within the legal department, you know? Losing one person is a big deal. Losing two people is a big deal, but losing four people is a huge deal in terms of, in a small department. So I think it's really important under your leadership that you focus on that and make sure that there are no balls that were in the air that are dropped. You know, the city this size that, that required, you know, six attorneys and, and several additional legal support. You know, it's, obviously we need to make sure that, that we don't skip a beat. We have lots of things going on, that I'm sure that those attorneys likely were the only people who, who were aware of that, you know, or, or, you know, it was compartmentalized because of the attorney-client privilege. So I just think that it's really important to make sure that, that, that those issues and those items are taken care of. And then also, you know, just obviously, given everything that's happened, it's, it's a delicate situation, so I hope that you're up for the challenge and I, and I'll obviously be supporting you. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman McKenney. Next, we're going to go to Mr. Richard Brown. He's been waiting patiently, so if you will, name and address.
Thank you, Mr. President. Richard, by the way, it's nice to be back in the council chamber. Richard Brown, 824 Sessions Lane, Kenner. My comment is actually directed mostly to the clerk. I don't have the actual resolution. I'm looking at the, the summary agenda, but there appears to be a typographical error. The last four words on item 13E say she's being appointed as interim city attorney for the city attorney. I think that should be for the city of Kenner.
Yes, sir. It was typed wrong on the agenda. We will, it's correct in the legislation.
So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Brown. Next, Mr. Al. Name and address.
Al Morella, 4260 East Loyola Drive, 5th District, 49 years. I want to welcome Ms. Sala onboard. And I like what you said. You represent the City of Kenner. In representing this legislative body and this administrative body, they should have one agenda. Both bodies represent the best interests of the citizens of Kenner. So when you represent them and you represent this administration, you are representing the people of Kenner because that's what they was elected to do. So we got to keep that in mind. And one more thing, communication, cooperation, and commitment is the key to any successful organization. Anybody got any comments, any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Al. Next, we have Mr. Taft. Name and address, sir.
Greg Taft, 3720 West Loyola Drive in Kenner. I too would like to welcome Ms. Sala to serve as the attorney for the City of Kenner on the interim. But I also, I want to respond to Councilman Branigan's point when he was questioning what the attorney would, or how she would react with this, react with that. And it's just going to be a quick comment. Don't want to get in any arguments. Don't want anything done, but I just want to remind everybody, because I brought it up at the meeting, two council members were not involved. Five conspired and left two council members out. And I'm going to leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Taft. Next, we have Councilman Brennan.
Thank you, Council Chair. I, I just wanted to reiterate the comments that have been made. Ms. Sala and I had a, a good phone conversation within the last few days. Have all the faith that you're going to do a fine job in, in this position and we look forward to working with you. Best of luck.
Thank you, Councilman. Madam Clerk?
There's, there's no further discussion. Councilmembers, please vote. Oh, sorry.
Ms. Fauchet, you have the floor, ma'am.
Sorry, I just wanted to follow up on something Councilwoman McKenney said, which is very important. When we identified the interim situation, we pulled all of our directors together and said, we do not know if you have a project that's up in the air that we don't have a documentation of. So we asked each department to identify what projects they had ongoing within the city attorney's office. So I would encourage you to do the same. If you have an ongoing or outstanding project with the city attorney, if you would send that information to Ms. Sala, she will have the ability then to make sure that someone's assigned to that.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Yes, councilmembers, please vote. Motion passes seven zero. Item 13F is a resolution ratifying the appointment of Elizabeth Herring as Director of Finance for the City of Kenner. Have a motion by Councilmember Segur, seconded by Councilmember Hayes. Seeing no discussion, councilmembers, oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Branigan?
Councilman Branigan, you have the floor, sir.
Congratulations, and I called it on May 18th, if you remember.
So just to make comment, Ms. Herring, this is not interim appointment. You will be the Director of Finance, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. No, no further questions? Anybody else? None? Seeing none? Madam Clerk?
Councilmembers, please vote. Motion passes seven zero. Item 13G is a resolution requesting a new notice of public hearing and a new ordinance regarding the 2021, 2022 operating budget for the City of Kenner. Mr. Chairman, I've received a request from Councilman Carroll for an indefinite deferral on this item. I have a motion by Councilmember Carroll and I have a second by Councilmember McKenney on an indefinite deferral on the item. Any discussion on indefinite deferral? Seeing none?
Councilman Segur?
Thank you, Council President. I guess I'm not sure because I haven't heard any comment about why this needs to be deferred from anybody, but as I appreciate, the purpose of the resolution, as I read it, is just to put in place that we all understood, and we should have understood for some time now, that there's been questions about the process of how the budget was approved in June. So things have happened since then to articulate that, and this is part of a process to get it corrected. And defer indefinitely, I don't understand. If the process is to fix the problem, why do we need to defer it or kill it? And I do want to remind everyone that at last council meeting, I had a resolution that called for requesting an opinion from the Attorney General's office. If we're not going to fix the problem, I will get with the city attorney starting Monday and start working on that request to the Attorney General to get an opinion. I thought this resolution would put that at bay, but if it passes, it's not going to put it at bay and I will seek that opinion. Thank you. Thank you.
If there's no further discussion on indefinite...
Madam Clerk, if you will, just pause a second. I appreciate it. I do want to make comment in response to Councilman Segura as well. There is another piece of legislation that has been filed, and it's for the first reading. It's on the supplemental, and I believe that is going to be 16L. So procedurally, it's my understanding that 16L will have an impact on the issue, and it's a ratification process, which we'll be getting into at that time when that legislation is heard. But currently, this piece of legislation is different. They complement one another to some extent, but at the same time, I've had the pleasure of working on this piece of legislation and spent quite amount of time on it. And in fact, David Sherman, an attorney who's been assisting on it, he and I have had numerous phone calls on it, and I've tried my best to get this thing in a posture with an amendment to make it a good piece of legislation. There's been, I want to say, two or three types or times amendments had to be applied to it. It's not an easy thing to do, but the amount of time in the last week or so on this particular piece of legislation has been a lot. And I know other people have been involved in it too, and I appreciate everybody's efforts. But putting it on the supplemental, I put it on the supplemental, my name appears on the bottom along with the mayor's. I did so because it's a supplemental, you have to have a councilman's name on it to bring it on a supplemental. And so both of them have been brought up, the actual ordinance as well as the resolution. So they have two. Can one work without the other? Probably. Do you need both? I don't know that, but I would think not. So I've had some difficulties and problems with this resolution. There are different issues involved in it, and it's been very difficult to make it absolutely clear as to what it should say. And this is it. This is not going to lie over. The other one lies over. This one does not lie over. It's going to be voted on tonight, because it's a resolution, right? So it's been different. I still have my difficulties with this piece of legislation, however. I believe that the ordinance to ratify is the right measure. I think that that will be sufficient in this matter, and I'm going to support the indefinite deferral. Councilman Brannigan, you have the floor, sir.
I don't need to speak right now.
No? Okay.
Councilman Brannigan, you have the floor.
No.
Your wave. Mayor Zahn, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Council President, and I do appreciate your work with me and my administration, Dave Sherman, getting these two pieces of legislation on. If you wouldn't mind, could we hear from Mr. Sherman on the importance of why both pieces, I mean, I recognize that there's an ordinance in first reading, but why both pieces go, do not have to go hand-in-hand, but they go hand-in-hand for a reason of extra safety net, I guess I should say. So if the council wouldn't mind, and if you would allow Dave Sherman to come up, who's been working on this since day one, to express those concerns and maybe, you know, direct the council on some of the things that maybe everyone may not know.
Sure. Mr. Sherman, if you will, take the microphone. This one over here, sir. Full name, please.
David Sherman. I'm an attorney with Sheharder Sherman Williams here in Jefferson Parish. And good evening, members of the council. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I have been working very closely with Council President Wilmot since the middle of last week, and I don't disagree with anything he said. That's why my recommendation has been to do both. And by way of background, I have been working with the attorney for the Legislative Auditor's Office. My only mission in representing the city was just to make sure there was no question regarding the budget. In working with the attorney for the Legislative Auditor's Office, and I know several of you went up and met with the attorney also, in working with her, we came up with what we believe is a good solution, and that's what's before you tonight. You'll notice the language in the ordinance and the language in the resolution mirrors each other. And the reason why I have recommended both, and I think Chairman Wilmot understood, is because in dealing with the attorney for the Legislative Auditor's Office, the question came up, should we do it by resolution or should we do it by ordinance? You have to understand, this is a unique situation with a unique fix. There's no precedent to go back and look at and say, "This is the way it should be done." That's why the attorney for the Legislative Auditor's Office said, "I believe a resolution is certainly proper, because ratifications are normally done by resolution." But by the same token, she said, "But an ordinance is proper also, perhaps, because you're ratifying an ordinance, so perhaps you ought to be able to do it by ordinance." I think you can. I agree with the council president. I think the resolution is certainly sufficient, because that's how you ratify, that's what's used in ratifications, but I think an ordinance works too. But obviously, there is a little bit of confusion. The Legislative Auditor's attorney can't be certain. She believes either one works. I certainly believe either one works. And the council president believes either one works. But none of us will say one or the other absolutely works, and that's the only way to do it. So just trying to solve the problem, my thought was, well, if there's any confusion, and that's what we're trying to alleviate, let's just do both. Is it overkill? It could be, but does it hurt anything? Absolutely not. And then it resolves the issue of, is one way better than the other or is one way exclusive? Again, just like the council president said, I believe either way works. I know he does. I believe that the attorney for the Legislative Auditor does, but all of us are saying we believe, because this truly is a case of first instance. So why not just cover ourselves, do both, and then there's absolutely no question? Any questions?
Mr. Sherman, the actual ordinance, though, the one that has been filed, that one in particular has a ratification clause in it, correct? Asking that it be ratified.
The language in both is virtually identical, Councilman. It was just being done, one is an ordinance, one is a resolution, just to cover all bases.
Councilman Brannigan, you have the floor.
Councilman Hayes. The...
What?
Oh, no. Okay. On this resolution, I'm in favor of indefinite deferral on it, because the council clerk has been here for 30-plus years, and this would mean that when we have public hearings on ordinances, we're going to have to have a resolution to proceed that in the future. And I just don't think that's the right way to do it. The Legislative Auditor said to do the ratification, and 16L, that's going on for first reading, is following what the Legislative Auditor said to do. And I just don't think that we need both pieces of legislation. 16L, on for first reading today, will take care of the issues, and we move forward and get this budget debacle behind us. That's all I have to say.
Can I respond, Councilman?
Sure.
Again, in all due respect, this resolution has nothing to do with ordinances going forward. So passing a resolution tonight is not setting precedent that you have to have a resolution for all future ordinances. I think everybody involved admits, this truly is a case of first instance. The Legislative Auditor has never dealt with this particular issue. No one has, which is the only reason why we're trying to be extra cautious, and if we're going to err, err in the side of overkill as opposed to missing something. But again, I just want to point out, what's done with this ordinance legally is not going to set precedence going forward.
Well, I guess we'll just have to agree to disagree.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Councilman Segura.
Thank you, Council President. Yeah, as, here we go again with confusion on which way to go on something. And again, resolution, ordinance, they both say the same thing. There's no harm, as what Mr. Sherman's saying to a degree, that there's no reason to do both, and there's no harm to do both. And why not do both? Because that way, we're clear if later someone challenges or says something different. And I do believe, why not pass the resolution? It doesn't do anything more than what that ordinance is going to do in 28 days from now, whereas the resolution will give the public a good indication of what the council's intent is to do to fix the problem that was created by a process that did not go as it should have gone, which the Legislative Auditor has made clear, from all input that I've got, that there was a problem. And that is why we're having to address fixing the problem. So doing this resolution, again, is just up and aboard, transparent, lets everybody see what we're saying now is what we're also going to say in 28 days. But one other thing. City Attorney, your first assignment. Would you please let me know your opinion on what we should do?
Well, as you all know, I've stayed out of this, because my predecessor made an opinion that there was a conflict. So I've stayed out of this budget question issue until today. And like I said earlier, I did seek ethics counsel. An ethics counsel opined that there was no conflict. However, I wanted to get something in writing, a written opinion, before speaking on this, on the budget issue as well. But if you're asking me today, and after speaking with Mr. Sherman earlier today, I have to agree with his opinion. Out of abundance of caution, it does not hurt to have two different versions, but the same, two different vehicles, if you want to put it that way, but they both say the same thing. So I'm agreeing with Attorney Sherman.
Okay. And that's what I was trying to explain. It's the same legislation verbiage-wise, one's resolution, one ordinance. It clearly puts out, as I said, the message to the public. We've recognized a problem. It's been vetted all sorts of ways, and it's sustained that there is a problem, and that's why we're having to go through with these fixes. So on abundance of caution, pass them both, and then we're clean and clear after that. Anything less than that is saying we're still trying to hide a problem. Thank you.
Councilman Brennan, you have the floor.
Thank you, Council Chair. So I will ask this to Mr. Sherman and Ms. Al. If either of these does not pass on the resolution, is there any negative or jeopardy that could occur because of that?
As I said in the beginning, I agree with Council President Wilmot. Mr. Councilman, I believe that you can probably do it either way, but out of an abundance of caution, and the only reason that I think Councilman Wilmot, and I understand his position tonight, but the only reason I think we worked on this for the last almost week now, is because we believe that, since this is a case of first instance, although we all believe you can do it either way, why take any chance when we're trying to make sure everyone has confidence in the budget? So let's just do both. Absolutely doesn't hurt anything. I don't think anybody would say doing both hurts anything. Are both necessary? Maybe not. It's just out of an abundance of caution, which seems to be the wise thing to do.
Okay. And if, and, you know, it just seems to me, we're just dotting i's and crossing t's to make certain all our ducks are in a row. If that's your opinion, and Ms. Al, as the city attorney agrees, I understand. Thank you very much.
I would also, if you mind, just add, it has something to do with what Councilman Brennan just asked.
Sure.
I would be concerned, Mr. Sherman, about, there's like eight days left in the 60-day challenge. So if it's challenged, that's something I'm concerned that I would have, but not for me, not for y'all, for the city of Kenner. For the city of Kenner's, you know, budget, that would be my concern, the eight days left for anyone from the public to challenge the issue. So the resolution, my point is, would actually give the city of Kenner, not me, not you, everybody, some protection.
Councilman Hayes.
We sitting here are responsible for where we are tonight. We had a process that wasn't followed the way we could have done it. I've hurried sitting here, there's a commercial running right now where they talk about probable and possible. I think tonight, this point, right now, there's no probably. Let's try to do this right. Let's follow the advice that we're hearing tonight and make certain, we put a nail in this, so we are not challenged again. So I agree with the outside attorney, Mr. Sherman. I agree. I seconded this with Councilman Segura. Let's make sure we try to end this tonight.
Thank you, Councilman. I don't see any more names in the queue. No one from the public? Madam Clerk?
Just kind of point of order.
Sure.
Just point of order, I'm making everyone stand if you're against indefinite deferral. Please press the man.
Is that, if you will, explain the vote?
You're voting on indefinite deferral. Council members, please vote. Motion passes. Council members Brennan, Hayes, and Segura are opposed.
Next, Madam Clerk.
Item 14, is items removed from the consent agenda? We have none. Item 15, acceptance of contracts and similar matters approved by the mayor. Item 15A is summary ordinance number 12,873, an ordinance approving an agreement for Phase III elevations, evaluations at the Ponchartrain Convention and Civic Center with the Solution Corporation, and an amount not to exceed $135,000. Mr. Chairman, we have received a request from the administration for a one-meeting deferral. I have a motion by Councilmember Hayes, seconded by Councilmember Brannigan, on a one-meeting deferral. Council members, please vote. Motion passes 7-0. Item 15B is summary ordinance number 12,878, an ordinance authorizing the purchase and assembly of one mobile license plate recognition, four-camera system with associated components, including installation utilizing state of Louisiana contract number 4400011241 with LA Tech LLC, not to exceed $23,452 annually. I have a motion by Councilmember Brennan, seconded by Councilmember Wilmot. Council members, please vote. Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Brown?
Name and address. Richard Brown, 824 Sessions Lane. I have some questions for the chief of police regarding this. And chief, let me hand you this. I don't know if you can read my handwriting, but it's the questions I'm going to ask. I scribbled that while I was sitting here. And I'm not necessarily opposed to this purchase, nor to the use of the automated license plate reading...[1800.57] nor to the use of the automated license plate reading cameras. I know what they are, how they work, what they can be used for, that they have been very successful in solving some crimes, serious crimes. But they have also been subject to, to serious security breaches of all sorts. And the questions I have are, for example, it says this is a, I understand it's a four-camera system. Is that correct, Chief? Is it, is it to be mobile or stationary?
It is a four-camera system that is mounted on one patrol unit. So it is, to answer several of your questions, mobile or stationary? It's mobile, sitting on top of the car, pointing out of each corner. It has four cameras, not stationary. Retention period is the same as we have for our fixed-mounted automated license plate recognition cameras, which is currently three months, but our detectives are requiring, are requesting me look at it to go a little further because they're finding that investigations of multiple car burglaries and crimes need a little bit more retention to, to actually put a car, if they develop a suspect, in an area where a crime was committed on a date and time. Access is our detective bureau, the supervisors, and our crime scene technician have access to the, crime scene supervisor has access to the system. They, it's a, it's a password login for access. And the security is, most of our camera systems these days are not hardwired anywhere in, in the parish, actually. It's all, works off of a data card.
Okay, that, that helps a lot. Thank you, Chief. Let me try to ask two or three follow-ups. Is, what type of record is kept for logging in? And when an officer does log in, does he have to write down somewhere what the purpose is, or what, what he was looking at? And here's my concern, which maybe you can address, is that I follow this sort of thing throughout the country because I've also followed the use of red light cameras and speed cameras, and the same websites also report on what's going on regarding these. There have been many security breaches and many instances where officers or unauthorized personnel, maybe not a police officer, have accessed the system and released information either to the public or to attorneys. Divorce attorneys, for example, will pay very good money, maybe thousands of dollars, if they can find out where a particular car was on a particular date, whether it was in a particular neighborhood. It's that, that sort of breach that, that concerns me. There've also been data breaches of the type where somebody breaks into the system and has access to everything. And that's the reason for these questions, and especially as to, to the officers that have access. Can, can any police officer or any detective just go log in and then search whatever he wants to?
No, there's a, there's a password access. There are specific reasons why they, they need to access the system in itself. And it's governed by internal policies with the police department. And it's also been, it's all tied to the Louisiana system and the National Crime Information Center computer, NCIC. They have auditing processes that we go through every year. And if any flags come up, we follow up with an audit that we, that they, if they have a question on, on any access or any specific inquiry.
The, the last question that ties in with this, is there a record kept of every time the system is accessed and who accessed it? Is there some way you, you as chief, or somebody can go back six months from now, or two months from now, three months from now, and see who accessed it on what dates and at what time?
Yes, I'll, IT director can, yes.
Okay. Thank you, Chief.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. No other questions?
Yes.
Nobody in the queue. Madam Clerk?
Council members, please vote. Motion passes, seven zero. Item 15C is summary ordinance number 12,879, an ordinance accepting the lowest response bid received from Beacon Air Conditioning, Heating and Refrigeration Incorporated to furnish and install HVAC unit for council and agent in accordance with letter bid number 21-1985 and an amount not to exceed $9,631. I have a motion by Councilmember Carroll, seconded by Councilmember McKenney. Council members, sorry. Council members, One more vote. Motion passes, seven zero. Item 15D is summary ordinance number 12,880, an ordinance accepting the lowest response bid received from Fleming Construction Company LLC for the John Hopkins Sewer Force Main Replacement Project in accordance with seal bid number 21-6611 in the amount of $478,760. I have a motion by Councilmember Brennan, seconded by Councilmember Wilmot. Seeing no, Councilmember McKenney?
Um, yes, I just have a question from the Public Works, for the Public Works Director or Deputy. How much is this project that's covered fully by, with Kenner? Or is this something that's in a partnership with, paid by the state or another?
Yes, ma'am. This, this part of the project, the construction phase of this project is totally funded by our loan through LDEQ.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Brennan?
Thank you, Council Chair. And Ms. Stranahan, could you just expound on it a little bit to explain this a little better, please? Thank you.
Yeah, this project replaces an old force main that was built probably in 60s or 70s. It's an AC line and is broken several times, probably at least 10 times. Sometimes, it's on, it's located under the sidewalk, goes from the Ole Miss station down to the station down there at West Esplanade. And we often call it the Ole Miss station. But now the new, the new project will be located in the street and it'll be a bored pipe, completely out from under the sidewalk.
And do we have a start date and a, a time estimation?
Yeah, hopefully with this passes, we'll be able to issue notice proceed later this month. And so we expect about a three-month contract duration.
Good deal. That adds to my colleague's support, please. Thank you. Thank you.
Council members, please vote. Motion passes, seven zero. Item 15E is summary ordinance number 12,881, an ordinance approving Amendment Number One to the Community Housing Development Organization, CHDO, agreement between the city of Kenner and New Hope Community Development Corporation. I have a motion by Councilmember Carroll, seconded by Councilmember Wilmot. Seeing no discussion, council members, please vote. Motion passes, seven zero. Item 15F is summary ordinance number 12,882, an ordinance authorizing an agreement with RCO Company Services Incorporated to provide generator maintenance and repairs in accordance with RFP number 21-6591 and an amount not to exceed $99,000 annually. I have a motion by Councilmember Branigan, seconded by Councilmember McKenney. Councilmember McKenney, you have the floor.
Thank you, Council Clerk. My question on this was just, I wanted to clarify what the pre, so this is an annual, is this an annual contract? How much was the previous contract for? And, you know, obviously it's not to exceed. How much did we spend on this contract if it's the same contract last year?
My request button isn't working. So it is an annual contract. Last year it was $91,000, and we expended about $30,000. It's like, it's a repair and maintenance. So as things would break, we would use this contract. So it's hard to tell what, what is needed each year. So I think that what they're asking for is definitely, would be enough to, to get us through hurricane season for sure.
And it's the same company as well, right?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Seeing no further questions.
Just real quick, I just want to add. So this is for not only the stationary generators at all of our facilities, it's also for all of the mobile generators that go to the lift stations for sewage in the event of a power outage. We have had some issues in the past with some of those generators. We, we just don't have the staff that are trained to operate on generators. So we plan on utilizing this company a little bit more to make sure that we have 100% coverage in, in the event that we need it.
Thank you, Director.
Thank you, Mr. Pittfield. Anything else further? Councilwoman?
Oh, no, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else?
Council members, please vote. Motion passes, seven zero. Item 15G is summary ordinance number 12,883, an ordinance accepting the lowest response bid received from Han Enterprises Incorporated to furnish and install new fitness equipment with slab and rubber surfacing in accordance with seal bid number 21-6612 and an amount not to exceed $57,822 for the Department of Parks and Recreation.
Councilman Segura, you have the floor.
I have a motion by Councilmember Segura, seconded by Councilmember Wilmot.
Councilman Segura.
Thank you, Council President. This is a continuation of a promise that I made to the Highway Park subdivision several years ago when we gave back the prop, and I say we didn't gave back, it belonged to the school board and the city had a cooperative endeavor agreement to use it. But when it became apparent that there was no need for it due to the demographics of people or kids using the playgrounds, Highway Park was merged with other playgrounds for the recreational use. So the property, cooperative endeavor agreement had expired, so it was given back to the school board. We had a totlot on that property, which was at need of repair at that time, but at the time when we gave it back, it was removed. So the residents in that area started questioning about, could they get, could we make something available for them? So after some time, was able to get a new cooperative endeavor agreement between the city and the school board, with the thanks of our school board rep, Ms. Sandy Bossarch, and the former school board president, that allowed us to take a piece of that property back and use it for some form of recreation for Highway Park. So the first thing I did was put in a totlot equipment, which has been available, well, trying to put it in perspective. It went in in 19, late 19, but then shut, shut down in 20 because of COVID. At the same time, I was preparing to get bids and do a exercise area for the, the parents, particularly, I guess, the mothers who bring their kids to the totlot, that they would have something to do while they're there and exercise. Again, that unfortunately got delayed due to COVID and all of the factories shut down. And so we couldn't get it bid and in order. So now, this is what this is, the, the bid to get it in and get it installed to finish the need for the residents in the Highway Park area to have some area of, of activity for the kids to play on the totlot and whoever on the exercise. I will also be refurbishing the batting cage that's still there and make that into a covered area with picnic tables so that whoever can have a place to sit down and relax and feed the kids, I guess, during the time they're there. So hopefully, barring any other problems with COVID, we'll get this in place and get it available for the residents in the Highway Park area to use. So, thank you.
Councilman, on the, the fitness equipment, what, could you describe it a little bit?
It, it's a pad, just like the totlot. It'd be a concrete pad with the, the soft, spongy surface on top. But then throughout the pad are stationary equipment, like glider, where you can, you know, do gliders, there's push-ups, pull-ups, bike riding. There's a, a impaired, like someone in a wheelchair station that they can exercise also. So it's various exercise things, but they're stationary, but will last longer in that configuration. So.
Kind of like a lot of the parks that...
Yeah, like you'd see at Laughing Year Park, just as they, around their tot, their walk path. So this will just be on one square or rectangular of concrete. And then we'll connect the, that pad with the totlot, so they'll be able to transfer between both easily. And then, like I said, has some benches and then the picnic tables underneath the refurbished batting cage.
Good. Thank you for that explanation. Sounds like a good project. Thank you. Especially Highway Park is near and dear to me. So.
Oh, well, go make yourself comfortable in, in the exercise area. I'll join you one day. Let me know when you're going.
I need to. Yeah, there you go. Okay. Madam Clerk? That's it, huh?
Council members, please vote. Motion passes, seven zero. Item 15H is a resolution approving Amendment Number One to the agreement with Risk Tree Service LLC dated March 25, 2021, to provide tree work on an as-needed basis in accordance with seal bid number 20-6560, which increases the not-to-exceed amount by $100,000 for the Department of Field Services slash Parkways. I have a motion by Councilmember Branigan, seconded by Councilmember McKenney. Councilmember McKenney?
Yes, Council Clerk. Thank you. I just, so it's increases by 100,000. I just want some clarifications on the need for that. And then also, what was in the, is this an, is the date, is it because the date is being extended? Because I know it's the 2022. And I guess I just want, want to be able to understand the, the extension and why is it so much?
I'll ask Ms. Heron if she can help me real quick and give you that figure, then I can explain the other half, if you don't mind.
So the original contract began on June 30, 2020, and went through June 30, 2022 for $130,000. And we have expended all of that except about $10,000.
Okay. Thank you.
So the reason for that, I'll tell you, is three reasons that we have going on in the city right now. We've had a higher-than-average rainfall, which is taking the stability and the foundation from some of these trees. We have had an enormous amount of trees that have fallen because of the, the grounds being so saturated. We also have an infestation of termites. The termites get into these trees, rot them out on the inside, they have to come down. Most of the, so all of these trees that we're talking about are either on city rights of way or on city property. And then the last thing is the age. We have a tremendous amount of elms and water oaks in the city that are probably five to 10 years over their anticipated life expectancy. So unfortunately, when we're dealing with trees that are 40 and 50 feet tall, the city doesn't have the personnel nor the equipment to handle it, because we're talking about people's homes that are nearby. And we want to make sure we get the very best people. And we have the very best people in Risk Tree Service that are doing that service for us.
Great. Thank you. I really appreciate that thorough explanation, explanation.
Councilman Hayes?
Why are you up there? I just want to say, congratulations to this company. They've done some work in my district. They do good work.
They really, they really are, Councilman. They're doing it all over the city as well. They're helping us with some streetscaping, beautification of trees. And look, they pitch in a lot because they're vested in our community as well. So I agree with you. Hats off to Risk Tree Service. I'm glad we found them. I'm glad they're in the city.
Finish, finish, Councilman? Councilman Hayes, you finished?
Yes, sir.
Okay, next we have Councilman Carroll.
Thank you, Ms. President. So, Mr. Pittfield, and I guess also Ms. Foshee, since we're talking about trees, and there was a conversation that's been ongoing for a few months, really before the pandemic, as it relates to trees within District One that are also almost 100 years old. They've lived up there... lived up to their expectations along Airline in front of the storage. Some trees were cut down. The assessment was made that we should go with a different type of tree for longevity and for beautification. Could this be used, this contract be used to support that area on Airline?
This contract is for service. It is possible that the installation and removal of the trees will be done under this contract, but the expense associated with this, and for those who may not know what we're talking about, since you and I are talking in shorthand, along Airline, there's a beautiful expanse of Bradford pears. They were probably planted 50 years ago, and they have a 40-year lifespan, or 60 years ago. Anyway, they're, they're past their useful life, and what happens is they, those trees, when they get too old and too heavy, they just fall apart. So they're starting to fall, like limbs are falling into Airline Highway. The, the cut that you're talking about was literally the week before we got sent home for COVID. A, a tree cut hired by the tenant or the landowner went and cut the trees, and we stopped work them. So we had some trees down, some trees half down, spoke with you, spoke with some members of the community and said, okay, we've got to get together a plan to replace them. The plan to replace them is with Chinese fringe trees, which are much more stable. They're fabulous if you see pictures of them. Google that when you get home. They're gorgeous. The challenge for us is that we are going to have to bid them if we don't find a grant, because they're about $1,000 a tree, is that correct?
Correct.
And we need 60 of them. So what we're trying to accomplish, we don't want to go cut those trees down and alarm the neighborhood and have nothing to put in. The plan really was to be out there almost simultaneously, cut a tree, cut a tree, and then in the space between the trees, plant one of these new trees. But at this point, and we literally had this conversation this morning, we're looking at funding alternatives, because there's a season that you plant as well, and we have another, what, two weeks that we have to figure out a way to come up with...
Yeah, about a week and a half, and we're kind of in a pinch series right now, because we're not talking about planting a seedling, we're talking about planting an eight to a nine-foot tree. So you're going to get instant gratification by seeing an eight to a nine-foot tree present that's going to last well beyond our lifetime.
Yeah, and you are...
Yeah, you got any money?
You, I will be able to support some, yes. I committed to that, I will be able to. And, and you are correct, it will be in, both of our phones will jump off the hooks if we cut all those trees down and, and do nothing, Mr. Pittfield and Ms. Foshee. Seasonally, so, Mr. Pittfield, when, when is the best time to plant the tree that we're talking about replacing, Ms. Foshee is talking of?
So any of them going to be in the late fall, obviously, in the time right now where the grounds are so dry, trees, plants, flowers, anything needs that moisture to pull in? If there's nothing there, they're going to die. So the fall, so we're trying to, we have a nursery right now that has the trees available. Like I said, between eight and nine feet, they're a little over $1,000 apiece. We're trying to now work the magic, because, look, this mostly comes to commercial people, and they pull out the debit card, credit card, and they buy them, but obviously, we can't do that. So we're trying to figure out a way that we can make this happen at such short notice. So Ms. Foshee and I, I think, talked at 7:00 this morning, trying to, you know, trying to still brainstorm and figure it out, and we're going to continue to do that, because I don't want to let this slip away, because this is literally a once-in-a-lifetime thing for us right now to grab this and get this done.
Yeah, it is, and I appreciate your conversation, and since we have the fall to try to put together a plan, Ms. Foshee, Mr. Pittfield, I think that should give us enough time to come up with something, and to, the timing is important, to be able to cut, plant along Airline Highway.
The fall would be the planning. We have two weeks before they sell all these trees, so we don't have that long, so the planning could occur in the fall to make it happen, but in two weeks, it's going to become a first-come, first-served at the nursery. So we're still working. I'm not giving up hope yet, we're trying to figure out a way.
So if we were ready now, we could purchase, if we had, if we had a plan, we could purchase. If we, since we're not ready, if they sell all the trees, then the plan is, we got to find someone else with the trees. Okay, all right then.
And in the meantime, we're addressing it tree by tree. When we go to replace them, it will be all of the trees.
Right.
But right now, just so we don't have, you know, tree shock in the neighborhood and don't offend the neighbors any more than we absolutely have to, if a tree begins to fall apart or becomes dangerous, we'll take it down. But otherwise, we're trying, we're trying literally to nurse them through their elderly age until we can get in a position where we're literally replacing trees while we're cutting them down.
Yeah, unfortunately, we are in the month away from our most historic and deadly hurricane season. If we get any type of a situation, there will be some trees come down, without a doubt.
Absolutely.
Because we've, we've lost some before.
Right.
Because of the hurricanes and the, and the wind. So, you know, we, we can't control that, but it, it will happen if, once we get to September, cross our fingers and we get a little, little weather. Okay, well, thanks a lot, Mr. Pittfield. Look forward to supporting on this. Thank you, Ms. Foshee.
And just to throw one more thing in real quick, as far as the trees, you know, we're talking about this company with Risk, with their, you know, most people would just be here to come and bring a chainsaw and chop the trees down, but Mr. Toobray and his team have actually gone, have gone to extensive training and purchased specialized equipment. A lot of the trees that we send them out to check, they actually drill a hole and treat it. So we're trying to save, I mean, that's one of the beautiful things about our community is we have a lot of trees. We are a tree city, as we see around a lot of places, so it's not just about cutting these down, it's about keeping them alive and trying to keep them healthy. So we do a lot of treatments, which is covered in, in this contract as well.
Yeah, so what's the longevity of the tree that Ms. Foshee described to use?
I believe it was somewhere around 20 years, and I think it's right around 24, 25, at least, at this point. It's about five years over.
That's long enough.
That's why you see the trunk starting to split, and then it starts going off in different positions, and it just can't contain the weight, so it falls.
Okay, is that, what's the name of that tree again, Ms., because, no, no, the one we're going to replace?
Chinese fringe.
Chinese fringe.
Yeah, so it's similar to a crepe myrtle, but the difference with the crepe myrtle is it has those little smaller pink flowers that when you walk by, they fly for about two blocks and get all over your car. This is a heavier flower that falls directly down on the ground, and then as they cut the grass, it disintegrates.
Okay.
So it's a heavier flower, it's not the pink flower that goes all over.
Yeah, because that, that, that to itself is...
Well, then it goes into the drain system. We have all kind of other issues.
Okay, well, good. I, you know, great conversation, look forward to supporting this and improving the, the ambiance and the overall Airline appearance for, for that area. Look forward to it. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Pittfield. Thank you, Ms. Foshee. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Councilman Carroll. Next we have Mayor Zahn.
Getting back to the original discussion about the service on it, kind of combination of what Councilman Hayes said and also what Mr. Pittfield was saying, Risk does a lot of work throughout the city, but if you want to see how the works really, on a major thoroughfare in the City of Kenner is Powell Boulevard, I just talked to Councilman Hayes about this this morning, because I talked to Mr. Pittfield yesterday evening about it, those trees look terrible. I get a call from some residents, and I know Mr. Councilman Hayes does the same thing, we get calls from residents about the trees on Powell Boulevard. Probably in the next week or so, those trees will be trimmed, so you'll be able to see what Risk really does. I mean, I know you all support Risk, what's going on throughout the city, but it's hard, they do such a good job that you really don't see the difference, because they keep behind it. Power is a situation, like Mr. Pittfield was talking about, with the rain hitting them and coming down, and just not being trimmed. That's going to be a good area for you to look at and see. Look at it now, and what is it, Chad? About a week?
Yes, sir.
About a week, it'll be trimmed. So if you look at it between now and next week sometime, just notice the difference before and after. So, thank you, Councilman Hayes, for working with us with that, too.
Very good. Next we have Councilman Branigan. Ms. Foshee, the trees are $1,000 apiece?
Yes, sir.
And how many of them do they have?
Sixty.
What's that?
Six, zero, sixty.
You need sixty?
Yeah.
But could, could we use those trees in different, like if I had a spot in District Four that I wanted to put three or four or five of them in a row, I could do that?
Our, our plan is for all crepe myrtles and all Bradford pears to replace them with Chinese fringe going forward. So if you have spots for them, then absolutely we could. One of our challenges is, on that stretch along Airline, we need to get the trees that are exactly the same size.
Okay.
So I can't remember, I think sixty, where's, where's, I think sixty does Airline, plus at the same time that the Airline trees were planted, there were some on Reverend Richard Wilson between Fillmore and Williams. So there, the combination, I think, between the many that are on Airline and the block or two that are on Reverend Richard Wilson was sixty, but I could, Chad, where are you? Chad, so that, the sixty number is for the existing spots.
Okay.
But if, we're about to lose them anyway, if you have places to put them and you can...
Yeah, if I wanted 20 of them, or 10 of them...
What's the bid limit? We're going to do a bid on any of them?
Yeah, one, yeah.
One?
It's 1,500, anything.
1,500, that's our problem, we have to do a bid.
Oh, that's not going to work then.
Unless you, you know, yeah, unless there's some tree lover out there who wants to help us, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Finished, Councilman? Branigan, you finished?
Yes.
Okay, I don't see anybody else in the queue. That was a good discussion. Members, please vote.
Motion passes seven zero. Item 16 is ordinances and resolutions and summary for first reading. Item 16A is an ordinance amending the Kenner Code of Ordinances, Chapter 15, Section 23, to add and delete traffic control signs for the Department of Public Works. Item 16B is an ordinance authorizing acceptance of a private donation for the purchase of two new exhibits from Clark Planetarium, a sole-source provider for the Science Museum in Rivertown. Item 16C is an ordinance ratifying the emergency purchase of a Dino 6 sediment removal system at Lake Townboat Launch in the amount of $119,697 by Geo Foam International, doing business as Jackson Specialties for the Kenner Department of Parks and Recreation. Item 16D is an ordinance authorizing an emergency purchase of a new fence at Butch Dewey Playground in the amount of $9,998 by Amco Fence Kenner LLC for the Kenner Department of Parks and Recreation. Item 16E is an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Avery Dennison Office Products Company to supply reflective sheeting supplies as needed in accordance with SEAL bid number 21-6615 and an amount not to exceed $30,000 for the Department of General Services. Item 16F is an ordinance accepting the lowest and responsive bid received from AJ's Collision to provide automotive body damage and repair for the City of Kenner in accordance with SEAL bid number 21-6608 and an amount not to exceed $70,000 annually for the Department of Fleet Management. Item 16G is an ordinance ratifying the emergency replacement of shingle roof section for Fire Station 39 by Garcia Roofing in the amount of $23,801.82. Item 16H is an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid, base bid, plus bid alternate number one, received from Ram J Construction LLC in the amount of $1,180,060 for Lincoln Manor Subdivision Drainage Improvements Project, Facility Planning and Control, FPNC, project number 50-MF1-20-01, City of Kenner project number PW-2020-6-DR, in accordance with SEAL bid number 21-6610 for the Department of Public Works. Item 16I is an ordinance revoking ordinance 11,866 and accepting the lowest, the second lowest responsive bid received from Crescent Decal Specialist Incorporated to provide and install vehicle decals for the City of Kenner in accordance with SEAL bid number 21-6596 and an amount not to exceed $70,000 annually for the Department of Fleet Management. Item 16J is an ordinance approving the purchase of two additional Lucas III V3.1 chest compression systems from Stryker Sales LLC in the amount of $32,365.74, and in accordance with the same terms and conditions as set forth in original bid number 21-1974 for the Kenner Fire Department. Item 16K is an ordinance ratifying a change order for an emergency purchase to remove and install new diesel driver and pump fire pump, along with replacing single-wall fuel tank and damaged four-inch dry valve at the Ponchatrain Convention and Civic Center. Item 16L is an ordinance ratifying all procedural processes associated with the fiscal year 2021-2022 operating budget adopted June 14, 2021. Item 17 is reports from the council and our special committees.
Councilman Branigan, you have the floor. Yes, I want to let the residents of District Four know that I spoke to the KLS companies about the corner of West S. Plaid and Chateau Boulevard, where they tore down the building, and at a Chateau Estate Civic Association meeting, there were some concerns about debris going into the meat of hurricane season, flying all over the place. I was informed a week and a half ago that they were supposed to start the cleanup this week, but then the contractor got COVID, and they had to file for some report or, or permit that takes five business days to get it, and then after that happens, the contractor can start mobilizing and start the cleanup to clear the site of all of the debris that's there. That's what KLS companies told me, so that's what we put out on Facebook to inform the public. The other thing is that they have had a lot of questions about plans, what's going in that development, and the person told me that they're, they're looking at different options, but there's nothing written in stone yet. That's it. Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Branigan. Next we have Councilman Carroll.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to, to, to announce to everyone that the City of Kenner, along with the, the governor, Lieutenant Governor, Jefferson Parish, will be having a tribute for Mr. Lord Price on August 14, Saturday, August 14, at 4:00 PM. You know, this is something, quite frankly, that Ms. Foshee and I talked about a couple of years ago before Mr. Price actually was deceased, you know, to recognize, because Mr. Price is from, I mentioned earlier, our prayers for Mr. Ronnie Taylor, Mr. Price is, is from that area, which we call back of the track, the Pollock area, born and raised. And Ms. Foshee and I recognize he's in the Hall of Fame, Rock and Roll Hall of Fame, he's a Kenner boy, and that it would be, would have been a good idea. So we're a little behind it, but he will, he will be able to enjoy it as well, you know, in his, in his, in his heavenly space. But I'd like to thank the mayor and his administration, Mr. Gary Rucker at the theater, Ms. Chris Fortunato, Mr. Leon Controvespie, in their support, from their technical aspect, to be able to support the family in the community to put this event on for an icon like, like Mr. Price. And there will be limited seating at the theater. Obviously, we got hit with a little curve with, with the rise in the COVID. You will have to wear a mask, you will get your temperature checked, even though I know that, I've read that the temperature check is kind of passe now, we've learned, but it, it does give people a sense of comfort to know, to do that. We will be having COVID tests also given at the event. You must wear a mask, there will be hand sanitizers given out to people, so we are doing as much as we can for the safety of the people who will go to the event. We had a reception scheduled for the Pilgrim Baptist Church Fellowship, which is on Daniel Street, which is literally right through that wall we were talking about earlier, and it was going to be indoors, but we're not going to have it indoors, it will be outdoors in front of the church. We'll have tents and tables set up, because there are going to be people, relatives, coming from around the country to support. So, you know, like, like people do in Kenner, we like to, we like to have a good time, we like to eat, we like to socialize, particularly with our family members that we haven't seen in a long time. So we're going to try to put that on in a safe environment, and this particular project is coming together well, I believe, and I think it's something that we will be proud of. Ms. Fortunato will be helping developing a audio/video for the event, and if you are able to come, seating is limited, obviously, I wish there's enough space for everyone. We will be putting something on the Facebook, social media, and a press release also from Ms. Chris. So, you know, we want to then thank everybody for their support, for the mayor, for all of the departments, their support, and the community to be able to honor our native son, Mr. Lord Price. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. I'd just like to mention that we have the four-day Land Yap Classic Dog Show. It's actually started today, Thursday, August 5. It's, it's every day through Sunday, August 8, at the Kenner's Ponchat... It's, it's every day through Sunday, August eighth, at the Kenner's Ponchatrain Center. There are approximately 900 dogs consisting of 197 AKC, AKC breeds that are registered to compete. This is the 12th year that they've held this event. And again, it's at the Ponchatrain Center. On behalf of the council and in our city, we thank the two hosting dog clubs, which are the Metairie Kennel Club and the Louisiana Kennel Club. If you love dogs, try to stop by and watch all the different breeds compete. Judging starts at 8:30 in the morning, every morning. They, they have a pet food donation drive, so if you can, please consider bringing some type of dog or cat food item. This event is free to the public, so go out and enjoy. Thank you. Councilman Branigan, you have the floor. I had one, I had one more thing. The Kennel Rotary Club is doing a, uh, event at the Kenner City Park on August the fifteenth from 12 to 6:00 PM. And they're going to have the Bucktown, Bucktown All-Stars playing and they're supposed to land a helicopter out there. I don't know if they are or not. I don't know if they got approval to do that, but that, uh, they having a, uh, activities and games and a band playing out at the Kenner City Park on August the fifteenth from 12 to 6:00 PM. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. See anybody else in the queue? Madam Clerk?
Item eighteen is new business. We have none. Item nineteen is unfinished business and a motion to reconsider or remove from a tabled position. We have none. Item twenty is persons wishing to address the council on special subject matters.
Mr. Al, name and address, sir.
Al Morella, forty-two sixty East Oil Drive, Fifth District, forty-nine years. China, Washington DC virus numbers as of yesterday. Total number of tests done, eight million four hundred and fifteen thousand fourteen. Positive cases, four hundred and sixty-two thousand eight hundred and eighty-five. Negative cases, seven million nine hundred and fifty-two thousand one hundred and twenty-nine. Recoveries, five hundred and fifty-seven thousand five forty. Next item, Representative Joe Stagni, I'm demanding your resignation effective immediately because I don't believe that you have represented the best interest of...
Mr. Al?
No, 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 man. I'm, I got a right to say this. I certainly do.
You, you...
I don't believe he has represented the best interest of the people of South Kenner who live in that 92nd district because you do not support a bill one minute and turn around and oppose that same bill that you supported. Now, I want to respond to some comments that was made by the governor in his press conference that was held Tuesday. Governor, you need to address the real issue of what's driving these virus numbers in our state. And that real issue is simply this. Tens of thousands of migrants that are entering our country illegally, that are infected with this virus and knowingly that they infected, they are being dumped in every state and every community in this country. You need to tell the people of Louisiana how many have been dumped in our state. And what your plan is to do something about it. Until then, Governor, the only one that don't give a damn is you, not the people of Louisiana, who are exercising their right as free American citizens to decide for themselves on whether or not they want to take the vaccine or they don't. Now, I'm challenging you again, Governor, to debate me anytime, anyplace, anywhere, as long as it's a public place and we're on the record. Now, next item, tomorrow marks 76 years that the United States explored the first atomic bomb, dropped the first atomic bomb on Hiroshima, Japan. Three days later, the, the first bomb was dubbed Little Boy. The second one was dropped three days later on August the ninth, dubbed Fat Man.
Ten seconds, Mr.
And saved hundreds of thousands of lives because there was a ground assault being planned before that decision was made. 300,000 troops was going to launch a ground assault into Tokyo where 100,000 plus would have been killed. So anybody has any doubt whether we should have did that, think about that. The lives that were saved, the Americans and allies. Anybody got any comments, any questions? Thank you.
All right, Mr. Al. Next we have Mr. Greg Teff.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I, I like, I have a comment from Mr. Al. It's not a question, I just want to give a comment.
Absolutely.
So, so, Mr. Al, like always, you are definitely entitled to your opinion, but because Representative Stagni is not here, I, I'm going to speak on his behalf and say that as a South Kenner resident, as a person that Representative Stagni represents, it is my opinion that he is doing, he is doing a good job for the area in South Kenner. He is supporting not only South Kenner, along with the delegation from Jefferson Parish as a team member. He's doing a good job. Do I agree with everything that he does? Of course not. But I believe for the majority, and there's not a person on this planet that I agree with everything that they do, including my wife and daughter, who, who love me more than anything on this planet. So we disagree sometimes. So, uh, any particular vote that he may do, sometimes I agree, sometimes I don't, but I just, I just don't want people to think that, that Representative Stagni has not been supportive. And it, and I don't, don't take my word for it. Ask the mayor, ask Ms. Foshee for different projects that count, that Representative Stagni has supported and support outside of our area. So I, I just ask that you, you know, you speak to Mr., Mr. Stagni personally and, and, and express your concerns because I'm sure he wants to hear it and give him an opportunity to, uh, to address to him, Mr. Al. That's all I ask.
Can, can I respond to that?
I, I, I really...
Can I respond?
I just want to, you, next time, Mr. Al, I, I'm not...
No, because I've already covered that when I was talking.
Okay, well, then we, then we're good.
I've already covered that.
Al, Al, you already had your three minutes, sir? And this is a response? Maybe next time.
That's me, three more minutes.
There you go. Mr. Greg Teff.
I respect the way you asked.
Richard Brown. Mr. Richard Brown? He left. Okay. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second. We're adjourned.
Okay. So this is the notice. This is the public hearing notice?
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you.